Hey, there he is.
It was pretty.
It's snowing.
Yeah. It's a good idea.
Yeah. It's raining.
Okay, welcome to those that have joined us here in council chambers, as well as those that have joined us from the warmth of your home. We're all here in the unexpected snow here on March 12th for a meeting of, for a work session for the Bicoson City Council. Tonight, we're just going to walk through the various tax relief programs that we have in place as we approach the budget season and see what we want to do, if anything, about having a discussion to change those. So, how would you like to proceed?
Graham will walk us through it, sir.
Mr. Mayor, I'll members of council in your packet provided a overview of the tax relief programs that we have in the city, and all tax relief programs for that matter, including fee and sewer programs. But what I'll do, you know, at the request of city council, we were told to bring something to you also, and figured we'd walk you through this for, not only for y'all, if y'all have questions, and also for those at home. The various tax relief programs we have are identified in your packet, and the very first one is one that the General Assembly approved for, that provides tax relief for real property for 100% service-connected permanent and total disability individuals. The surviving spouse in these cases remains eligible for this exemption as long as they remain in the home and they did not remarry. This is the one that, if you may recall, was on the ballot a few years ago, back in 2011, that the constitution was changed to allow. In 2012 was when this program was implemented across the Commonwealth. In the chart, you'll see that in 2012, the first year of this program, we exempted $60,000, roughly $60,000, and there were 20 participants, and not to go through each year, but it went from 2012 to the current year of 2018. And in 2018, the current year that we're in, we have exempted $137,300 with 37 participants. And you can see how it's grown throughout those years. The second program that we have is very similar to the first one. It was something that was constitutionally changed through a ballot, and this is one where an individual, a spouse, that is the surviving spouse of an individual that was killed in action, as determined by the United States Department of Defense, which is very specific, this, they, the surviving spouse, receives tax relief on their home as well. It is, they, again, they will receive this tax exemption as long as they do not remarry and they continue to occupy the real property. We have one person in the city of Bicoson that qualifies under this plan. The third tax relief program is something that was changed in the city of Bicoson back in the early 2000s from, to the program that we currently have. This is a tax relief program that's for the elderly and disabled. This is something that there's qualifications for, for which you must qualify to fit the program, and you can see there's a bracket I'll go through. But in this situation, the, an individual has to be, at least one of the owners has to be 65 years or older, or permanently and totally disabled. The owner's net worth, in order to qualify under this program, has to be below $200,000 in net worth, and that does not include the home, so you get to back the home out of that, and up to one acre of land. The, so you have an age, and you have a net worth requirement, and then you have an income requirement. The income requirements that we have in the city of Bicoson are phased in, and they provide different exemptions depending upon your income level. In Bicoson, the income level is 0 to 25,000. You would get, you would qualify for 100% real estate tax exemption, up to $2,200. We have 56 households in that, that program there for that, in that phase one. The second, the second criteria, you know, for income is 25,000 to 33,000. That provides 75% exemption, and in these situations, if you qualify for less than 100% exemption of your tax, you can, in this situation, 75% exemption, tax exemption, you can choose to defer the other 25%. That's not something a lot of our residents do, because ultimately what that does, it provides, it puts a lien on the home, and the lien, then, of course, is something that gets left behind to, you know, the heirs. And as you go through this, you'll see that the next, the next level is 33,000 to 41,000 in income. It provides a 50% tax exemption. And then the last one, which goes up to 47,600, provides, 47,600 in income, provides a 25% tax exemption. I will add, not in this note, so this, a few years back, we changed our, our code, city code section, so that these levels increase annually based upon the cost of living, so these do change, and we'll be changing these for FY 2019, based upon the cost of living, you know, the percentage and everything. So, these, this program here for the tax relief for the elderly and disabled, we have 125 total households in Bicoson that fall into this program, and we give away, we exempt $196,200 in tax relief. That was for the most current year. Now, just as, you know, wanted to do, to provide some comparatives to what other localities do, because honestly, what Bicoson offers in this program is the most robust program on the peninsula. I mean, we, we do something that's kind of second to none. The city of Hampton changed their plan recently, where they basically only have a tax deferral or a tax freeze program. So, they don't have something where we, you know, currently exempt a large dollar amount for our, our citizens that qualify. Newport News likewise also just has a tax deferral program. York County does have a program similar to ours. Their income levels are pretty much what ours are trending to, eventually up to the $50,000. But you can see that their exemptions, the amount that they, they exempt for tax is like $600, $420, $300. They do provide 100% exemption for those in the most lower category, which is up to $19,000 in income. Williamsburg, again, only has a tax deferral program, and James City County, somewhat like York County, has a program similar to ours, that they have a tax exemption only on the first $120,000 of the value of the home, which provides, based upon their current tax rate in James City County, $1,000, $1,008 in tax, tax relief. And so, you can see the differences in the local governments with regards to what they provide their elderly and their disabled in this program. The fourth program that we have is based on the exact same criteria, is our real estate program, but we use the same income levels to exempt and provide relief for our sewer and our solid waste bill, you know, our nice bill that comes every two months. Our, our folks that qualify do get the same exemption from that bill, which would be the 100% relief, the 75% relief, the 50% relief, or the 25% relief, based upon what level they fall in. The last, the last one on here that, that is for the opportunity that the state provides local governments, the ability to, for a local governing body to have a tax levy on one motor vehicle that's owned by a veteran who is permanently or totally disabled at a tax rate not to exceed the general rate of local personal property tax. This is for disabled veterans for personal property. Hampton does have this. They have, they have an exemption for one vehicle. Newport News does. York County has modified, they've lowered their rate to $1. Williamsburg, city Williamsburg does not offer this tax relief, and James City County does. And, of course, right now, we do not. Just for some information, to further, you know, expand upon this program for the tax relief for disabled veterans for personal property, based upon an average vehicle assessment of $10,000, providing tax relief to the current eligible group of disabled veterans would result in approximately $15,000 in revenue loss. However, it should be pointed out, and it's mentioned here in the memo, that the disabled veteran will exempt their highest valued vehicle. They, you know, this is, so this could potentially be a low estimate that's provided. It also should be noted that this program would also be available to any of the veterans that would qualify, that live here in Bicoson but don't own real estate. So, if you go back to the very first, you know, chart where you see that we have 37 people, those are 37 homeowners, they're, own their homes. This personal property would just be based upon, you know, not homeownership, but if you are a resident of Bicoson and you're a disabled veteran, then you would qualify for this. So, that number, again, that we don't know, and we certainly don't know how many people would be in the program. It would be at least 37. Another thing we pointed out, I wanted to point out, based upon the manager, manager asked about, if we were to lower the rates similar to York County, then the first year revenue loss would be approximately $11,650. And the other thing that's important to note, this personal property is done on a calendar year, so we've already established the tax rate for, for calendar year 2018. Any changes to this would actually take place effective January 1st, 2019, and so that's just, wanted to point that out, because it will not affect but half of the budget for which you're about ready to get, to discuss. But that's all I have. That's, that's walking you through the programs in the city of Bicoson, and also the tax relief program for the personal property for disabled veterans, and I will be happy to answer any questions anyone may have.
I'm going to open the floor here in just a second. I just want to, there's one question, I just want to make sure that, because it goes directly to this. There's the state share of personal property tax, which is now a flat, flat amount of money.
That's correct.
Does that, us doing any of this affect that whatsoever?
It will affect it. It's, right now, the, the state actually gives us $1,923,000 in some odd dollars of personal property tax relief that goes towards our overall personal property. And so, what will happen in the event that we take, you know, if you have growth in personal property, let me slow down, back up a second, that number that they provide us provides roughly 55% personal property tax relief. That was the previous year, 2017. So, when you get your bill, you don't pay 100% of your bill, you're only paying 45% of your bill. So, in a situation where there's going to be some personal property growth, which we anticipate this year, the number, the $1.9 million will be spread out over a larger number, and so the percentage of tax relief is actually going to decrease. So, home, you know, so residents should know this year that instead of getting 55% tax relief on their personal property bill, that they're likely to get less than 55%, probably in the neighborhood of 52, 53%. Citizens are going to pay more.
And it'll...
This will have a reverse effect on it. If you take things out of the personal property tax base, then it changes, your growth is going to be less, and so, if that makes sense, hopefully I was able to answer that.
So, your answer is that even if we do this, the state does not do a similar deduction? It's not double jeopardy, basically?
That is...
We do it, and we lose state funding as well.
We won't lose any state funding. We still get the 1.9 million. So, it just gets spread out differently.
Got it. Okay. Questions? Yeah, buddy?
Graham, it's my understanding that the personal property exemption for 100% disabled veteran, you cannot tie it to combat-related, you cannot tie it to income, the state has made it so we cannot do anything other than if we want to have a reduced tax.
That's correct.
Okay. So, it could be, it could be 100% disability for something that's totally unrelated to service in the military?
That is correct. Yeah, that is correct. It's, it's, actually, it's 100% service-connected disability, but it doesn't need to be, it doesn't mean that's combat-related.
Right.
Okay, all right.
And I think it's very important to emphasize, so that people listening at home or watching at home, Hampton, Newport News, and Williamsburg are tax deferrals.
That's right.
You explained it, but I think it's important to emphasize that. Ours is an exemption. You don't pay it, we don't ever collect it. Those three localities, if it's passed on to their heirs, most likely, they got to sell the property, because they can't afford all those back taxes.
That's, that's correct. Yeah.
For somebody to say, well, Hampton and Newport News do this other one, well, look at what they're not giving people. And, and ours is for, could be for firefighters, policemen, or any citizen that's 100% disabled.
That's correct. That's correct. For, under, under the, under the third program, which is the real estate tax relief for the elderly, yes, that is exactly correct.
Okay. Any other questions? Carrie?
Yeah. I think that even if the person falls in the shower, getting ready to go to combat, that, that makes no difference. They was in the military, ready to give their life, or whatever part of their limbs needed to go into combat, and if they get hurt driving to it, you know, it, all the VA says is it has to be service-connected, as you said. But everybody in the service, regardless of what they're doing, can be called into combat anytime.
Yeah.
Just wanted to make...
Anybody else?
And we also comment, or compliment Graham on implementing a lot of these programs in his previous job, where we do things for the elderly and lower income, and I think that's wonderful, and we certainly don't want to take that away. But I think adding a separate class for veterans is a good thing, and I would think we ought to put it on the agenda.
I just have a question. Graham, for York County, is their tax rate reduced to $1, or it's a dollar discount?
Reduced to $1.
Reduced to $1.
Yeah. Their, their, their tax rate is $4, and so the tax rate for the disabled veteran that qualifies under the personal property program that they have, they pay a $1 tax rate.
Okay.
Yeah.
Is this time for comments, just questions?
No, you can, you can comment if you'd like.
Um, I just have to say, I've been very torn about this issue, very, because I can, I really can see both sides of the issue, as far as, from a financial perspective, it's hard, if you look at a veteran who's maybe living in a $500,000 house, who financially may not need this tax reduction, versus, I completely appreciate what Carrie says about the fact that these are people that have served our country, and if they were injured while they were serving our country, you know, that, that weighs heavy on me as well. I'm very glad that we're having a discussion about it, because I think discussions about issues are always a good thing, they're never a bad thing. So, I am really interested to hear where everybody stands on this, and to kind of hear everybody's feelings on it.
Okay. Bud?
Yeah, I'll weigh in on that also. I kind of share Carrie's opinion in that if you were in the military and you were on your way to combat and had an automobile accident, or you fell in the shower, you were on your way to combat, and had you not been in the service, that might not have happened. My only concern is that sometimes the VA gives disability status to people who absolutely don't deserve it. I do know of a case where a person had asthma before they got in the service, weren't able to go through basic training, so they were mustered out with a disability, and then because of that pre-existing asthma condition, became a disabled veteran, and with all kinds of benefits that they absolutely did not deserve. And, and that you have to separate the weeds from the chaff, and I don't know that you can do that in this case.
That's right.
Well, I'll, I'll be open and honest with you. I'm amazed at what we do, okay? So, what Graham, what Graham has just laid out to you is two pennies' worth of real estate benefit that, that at the end of the day is forgiven. It's not deferred, it's not reduced tax, it's deferred. And if you are a, a disabled veteran, and you meet the requirements of the first thing, then you still get the, the tax exemption, right?
That's correct.
So, in my way, in my small way of thinking here, we have the best program, bar none, across all the localities. And until somebody wants, somebody at least comes up to our level, I'm wondering what we're doing. Okay? So, that's the way I look at it. It's, I understand the whole thing. I know that there's abuses in the system. I know, I've got some that even work, that still work, that are totally disabled. Okay? It's really kind of a thing. And all I'm saying is that if I want to consider doing something on this particular issue, then I want to go back and look at all of it, and make sure that we have a program that we can afford. Okay? Because right now, you know, as, as we all know, as a council here, the, the bottom line is, we have some challenges as well. And it's not just about money in this particular thing. It's about, it's about recognizing people for what they've done for the country, and I think we do that today. So, the, so the question is, how much more do you want to do, and at what cost? Because we represent all of the taxpayers. And right now, I'm looking at a, a system where we are far superior to any locality, and yet we're talking about taking yet an additional step. At what point do the other taxpayers say, hey, well, what about us? What about us? So, I'm interested only if we're going to consider them all again.
Graham?
Yes, sir.
I'm reading here, pretty simple question, I think. You say that the 15, 350 in revenue loss is a, is a low estimate?
Mm-hmm.
So, what was that estimate based on? What did y'all look at when, when you did that?
Just looked at an average price of a vehicle.
Just average?
An average price of a vehicle, yeah.
Okay.
Just average price, yeah.
I agree that we've got the best program for people. I'm sorry, were you finished? That we have the best program for people, that's just one of the many, many things that make Bicoson great, but it's no reason why we can't be greater.
I have one more question. So, the, the state program, if they qualify for the, the state program for real estate, which is number one, they get, they have all of their personal property tax for their residents exempted?
Real estate. You said personal property.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
For real estate.
Real estate, 100%.
Is exempted.
That's correct.
And then our program, number three, is also for real estate, not for personal property.
That's correct. That's for, that's for real estate as well, for the elderly and disabled.
So, if a, if a veteran's 100% disabled, they wouldn't use number three in our program, because they're already getting it from number one?
Correct.
So, they're not getting any benefit from number three?
They don't, they wouldn't need it.
They wouldn't need it, because they're already getting...
Right.
...number one.
And I don't think, just one follow-up here. I think if the words that the General Assembly thoughtfully put in, the words that say, "a 100% service-connected permanent and total disability," were included in what we were considering, I don't think we'd be arguing about it.
I think it is. It's a known feature the VA uses. So, if we're talking about a VA 100% disabled, we're talking about what you just read there.
It, it is. It's, it's the same. It, it doesn't say 100%, but it's permanent, it should have said 100% permanent disabled. That is, yeah. Yeah. It's the same group of people. Yeah, it's the same group of people. But for Jana's question, you know, number one is for veterans, disabled veterans, and they would get 100% tax relief versus number three are any resident in Bicoson, it may be low-income and/or disabled, not military-disabled. And then they would fall into the criterias for income based upon their need, and thus, that's the tax relief they get.
Right. So, veterans would not use number, number three.
Yeah, there's no demonstration of need for veterans.
And my other thought is, if we consider doing this, we have firefighters and policemen that put their life on the line every single day, and if we have a firefighter or a policeman that is 100% disabled while they were serving, should or shouldn't they receive the same benefit? Because every time a policeman goes into a domestic abuse situation, or pulls a car over, they're risking their life. And so, is a firefighter every time he goes into a building, so if they got...
You go ahead, Graham.
I didn't want to interrupt. There is actually something in the state code that allows local governments to offer that as an optional, versus disabled veterans was mandated. There is an option for exactly what you just got there saying, for public safety people. Is that, yeah?
Help me out here, Graham. I'm not remembering the code section specifically, but I believe if you, if you do that one, it's, it's not constrained to persons that may have been hurt in the service to the community, it's any community. So, any disabled police officer from another state would qualify if he or she were to move here. I believe that's correct.
And I would need to look at the code section, but I don't, I don't know that it's hurt, disabled. I think it's a program similar to the Killed in Action program. I think it's based upon if someone dies, but it's a public safety.
I think that's correct.
Okay.
But I don't believe that it is constrained to having that qualifying tragedy happening in your community.
That is correct. That is correct. I believe that is correct. Yeah.
If we decided to put something in to give personal property tax relief to 100%, as it says, they are 100% service-connected permanent and total disabled veterans, can we write that, are we bound by what the Code of Virginia states when we do that?
Yeah.
Okay. So, we have to do it, if we decided to add policemen and firefighters, we would have to go by what the Code of Virginia states if we chose to add them? Is that correct?
And they, and their program for public safety that you brought up, it's, it's for real estate. Just, it's for real estate, just like the one for disabled veterans.
So, there is none for personal...
It's not personal property. I do not believe they're covered under, it's one for personal property.
So, would that mean...
It's just real estate.
Okay. So, that would mean we would not be able to do it for them for personal property, since the state of Virginia has not done it? Since they haven't allowed that separate class?
I, I, yeah, that's correct. That's correct.
Excuse me. I'll put you finish. In, in that case, is, do we have the ability to defer the tax rather than to exempt the tax for the 100% disabled veterans, such that if they really didn't need to have that exemption or deferral, then they may elect to go ahead and pay it? But if they really needed it for financial reasons, it could be deferred until after their passing?
I've never heard of a deferral for personal property tax. So, I don't, I don't know.
We can do that on the, on, or number three, but we don't, right?
Yeah, well, we do, do it on number three.
Oh, we do it, we do defer, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
You don't have to do it on number one?
Number one, you don't need to do it. It's 100% exempt.
Okay.
And the third program, which is for elderly and disabled, there is an exemption slash deferral. So, it's, you know, if you qualify for 100% exemption, great. But if you qualify only 75% exemption, you can defer the other 25% of your tax. Okay? But we, to my knowledge, I've never known of any locality that has a deferral for personal property, like you brought up.
Well, I know this in other cities, and some of their programs, they deferred rather than exempted.
That's correct, for real estate.
For real estate. And probably because cars are owned for such a short period of time...
Right.
...to defer it would be, the car would probably out...
Car would be gone.
...definitely outlive the resident.
And you wouldn't, yeah.
Certainly, if you had a vehicle that, let's say, was 10 years old, the amount of the value of the vehicle would, would be less probably than the deferred taxes, unlike your average resolution, which wouldn't happen that way.
And you would have no means by which you collect off of personal property if the car got sold?
Right.
What would you, how would you collect if, yeah, so, yeah.
Right. You can enforce this through the court?
You guess, exactly. Lean on the property. That's correct.
Back to Councilman Southall's comment, generally, I just disagree with the government deciding people's needs, just as a general principle. I just wanted to throw that out.
Yeah.
That's correct.
Okay.
I agree with that, Carrie.
Yeah.
All right, so what's the flavor here?
Mr. Mayor, if I could add a couple quick thoughts.
Mm-hmm.
We've been in discussions about tax rate increases to compensate for our CIP program to include the middle school. So, whatever we decide to do with tax relief for real estate vehicles would have to be compensated for, and that if we want to do something, one way to do that, I know that your county has a reduced rate, from their regular rate down to $1. We could consider, this is just for the sake of discussion, reducing ours not to $1, but by $1. We could possibly go from $4.15 to $3.15, and that would be doing something that would not have a huge impact on our tax income, but just throwing that out there as a thought.
Thank you.
Okay. Thanks. All right. So, we got a manager here that needs some direction, and whether y'all want to see this in your next budget, right? I know it wouldn't take place until mid-year, which makes it easier for calculation.
The, the calculation is exactly as Graham said it. The best and easiest, most efficient way to deal with this issue, if you'd like to establish a separate rate, which is no greater than, less than, can be less than, all the way down to zero.
way down to zero, is to provide some direction. We'll include that in the budget ad and in the recommended budget, which will be queued up for the appropriate public hearings and other things. And the best, the best sequence for something where you're going to establish a new type of rate is to, is to do it through the budget process because you don't have to go through a couple of, two sets of public hearings. And as council is aware, once you receive the budget, you're on a 40-day clock as per the city charter to adopt it. So it is difficult to, to throw in an idea that requires its own public hearing in that timeframe. So the best way to consider it is to provide some direction now so we can include it.
Well, if we were decided to do something for those people, the idea suggested by Councilman Hux, would that work to come up with a value that would give them some relief? To change the tax rate?
Is that directed to me? Yeah, you can change, you can change the tax rate. I mean, you can change the tax rate from the $4.15 downward, you know, just whatever the tax rate y'all would like to establish for disabled veterans for personal property.
I'm good at changing it to zero.
I'm good putting something in the budget. I'd like to see the boat tax pay for it personally. I'd rather give it to veterans than luxury boat owners.
All right, well, that's not direction. That was three different ideas, okay? So, all right? That's not direction. That's not unified, so.
I'm a veteran, and I'm very sensitive to them, but I don't support this. I have talked to quite a few retired military people who I would think would be very sensitive to this. None of them supported it. So, yeah, I'd just say that I think we should leave it alone.
I've had only one request for this, right?
That's correct.
I mean, I'll support having it in the budget. I don't, I think it's worth having it in there and considering it, letting citizens weigh in on it.
Okay. So what is the, do you want to do the $3.15? Or do you want to do the zero?
I'm still stuck on the zero.
I understand. You already, you already said yours. I'm looking for some type of consensus. I'm hearing $3.15, I'm hearing zero. What's y'all's consensus? Like I said, I think that we should go back and, and study all of it because I don't think y'all can afford what you're getting ready to do.
Mr. Mayor, I agree. If we're going to look at one thing, I think we should go back and look at the entire program. And that would be, I would think, a fairly significant effort on the part of already very busy staff to have to do between now and the end of April, before March.
That's where I'm at. If I'm going to look at doing something new, I want to know that affect all the way across because we're, you know, we're deferring a lot of tag, not deferring, we're, we're basically, we're giving people a tremendous break in this community as compared to our surrounding cities. If that's not reason enough to live here, then what is? I mean, just think about that. $192,000 a year, or what was it?
$196.
$193,000 a year that we're doing already. If you think there should be more and you, you want the other taxpayers to pay that, then, you know, I think you've got to start asking yourself, how much am I asking everybody to do?
Graham?
Yes, sir.
Can we, I think something that would help us tremendously would be having the dollar amount of the value, but there's no way, no way of getting it?
No way. We haven't even, the commissioner's office hasn't even assessed vehicles for 2019. So it, you, the best you can get is an estimate at this point in time, plus vehicles come and go.
Right.
You know, and so it, you know, using the average, you know, which, you know, which I tried to do, and I, you know, and then I highlighted the fact that it's, it's an average, and then people are going to choose their highest dollar car. And so it's going to be higher. Plus, there's going to be additional people in the program as it grows over time. It's just going to be, you can't put a dollar amount specifically on it. Yeah. It's very difficult.
And they may not even be homeowners in our city.
That's correct. That's another class of people that, yeah.
Is this something we can table for now and revisit it after this budget cycle so we're not under the pressure to, to get it done in the next few weeks?
Yeah, I think that's the best course I had because, like I said, the only way I personally could go with it is if I evaluate it all and see how you, how we're going to pay for it. I, I watch our federal government do this, right? Now, it sounds good. We, we don't know how we're going to pay for it year after next, right? So.
Well, with that being the case, I'm in favor of revisiting this because I'm kind of like Carrie, I think we ought to do something. But I, I just want to make certain we do the right thing.
Okay. That's as close to a consensus I've heard. You good with that?
Yes, sir.
You good, Jana?
I suppose.
Bud?
Yep.
Oh, yeah. There's four. All right, Carrie?
I'd still like to just go ahead and do this. Our best estimate there, based on whatever it was based on, was what, $15.3 is what additional cost would be?
That's right. That was it? Yes. That's right.
All right. So I'm hearing a consensus, Randy, to?
Six, one, to defer and then pick it up maybe beginning of the summer, while spent?
That's fine. It sounds good. All right. Anything else on the agenda this evening?
Not for work sessions, sir.
That's it. Let's try and quickly move over to, because we are a few minutes late, we started with the regular session.
All right. Thank you. Thank you. Good job. Thank you.